Good afternoon, I'm Carolyn Rye, School Board Chair. The Administrative, Informal, and Workshop Session of this meeting of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia is hereby convened at 4:03 PM on this 11th day of January 22nd. Pursuant to the Virginia State Health Commissioner's Order of Public Health Emergency Statewide Requirement to Wear Masks in K-12 Schools issued August 12th, and Virginia Acts of Assembly Number 1303, Chapter 456, and the CDC's Guidance for K-12 Schools and the School Board's 2122 Reopening Plan adopted August 10th of this year, it's determined physical distancing will be used in chambers as a health mitigation strategy. Therefore, there is designated public seating during this meeting. Members of the public, as always, are able to observe the meeting through live streaming on VB schools.com, broadcast on VBTV Channel 47, and on Zoom. It is the School Board's protocol to break at 5:30 to prepare for the formal School Board Meeting at 6 o'clock. At 5:30, the Board will conclude its this session unless the Board votes to continue until 5:45, at which time we would conclude to allow the Board and Administration to prepare for the formal session of the School Board Meeting at 6 o'clock. So we welcome all of those present today in person in the viewing public and wish everyone a Happy New Year. And with that, Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please announce those School Board members in attendance?
Yes ma'am. In attendance, we have Chair Rye, Chair Melnick, Mrs. Anderson, Mrs. Felton, Mrs. Franklin, Mrs. Holtz, Mrs. Hughes, Mrs. Manning, Mrs. Riggs, and Mrs. Weems. And on Zoom, we have Mrs. Owens.
And for the record, Ms. Owens is participating electronically due to health reasons this evening. Alright, so that brings us to our administrative matters. I had one point here, that as we sit here, we have Ms. Pate, our Chief Financial Officer, and Mr. Freeman, our Chief Operations Officer, are presenting on our behalf to City Council the revised reversion resolution. And Board members received an email from Ms. Pate yesterday noting some of the adjustments, and I'm happy to report that that was a product of our joint session that Dr. Spence, Ms. Pate, Mrs. Melnick, and myself attended with our counterparts on City Council and city staff. So we look forward to hearing more from that. So on any other admin matters, colleagues. Alright then, we have some important business to attend to with our presentation, we'll get right to it. And this is our annual recruitment, staff retention, and compensation update from Human Resources. And with that, we're welcoming Ms. Woodhouse.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, members of the School Board, and Dr. Spence. I am Cheryl Woodhouse, Chief Human Resources Officer, and this afternoon, the Department of Human Resources is pleased to provide its annual update on staffing and recruitment efforts and compensation. Anne Glenn Zelsneck, Coordinator for Recruitment and Retention, will provide the first portion of the update on staffing and recruitment efforts. And Judith Wood, Human Resources Specialist for Classification and Compensation, will provide the compensation updates. At the end of the presentation, we will provide budget considerations for the 2022-23 fiscal year. Hopefully you did receive a copy of your presentation in your packet. Now, we will stand ready to address any questions you may have at the end of each section. So without further ado, I introduce Anne Glenn Zelsneck.
Good evening, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, members of the School Board, and Dr. Spence. This evening, the Department of Human Resources would like to begin tonight's presentation by providing an update on the information shared this past summer. Our agenda for today's presentation includes local, state, and national challenges facing our division in regards to recruitment and retention. We will also be reviewing our staffing results and new recruitment strategies since August. Our compensation specialist, Ms. Judith Wood, will provide an update on compensation. Along with the other goals, the Human Resources Department especially supports Goal 4 of the Compass of 2025. We are always in search of high-quality diverse applicants, and our hiring managers also support this goal. As we reported to you in August, the factors that you see listed still have an impact on recruitment. An additional factor placing stress on our recruitment efforts is the high cost of housing in Virginia Beach. In a report published by the Education Council, they review the teacher shortage data supplied by the U.S. Department of Education. The number above each bar represents the total number of states reporting shortages. As you can see, the teacher shortages across the United States mirror the critical shortages, or critical shortage subject areas here in Virginia. One bright note is that the total number of candidates enrolled in Virginia's teacher preparation programs has increased over the past few years from 7,304 in 2016-17 to 10,447 in 2018-19. While an increase of 3,143 participants sounds good, if we divide that number by 134 school divisions in Virginia, that yields approximately 23 additional teacher candidates per division. As we can see, the supply still does not meet the demand. At the end of the 2020-21 school year, we had 1,462 employees retire or resign. Of those, 1,462 employees, 602, 41% were teachers. This is an increase over the previous year of 149 teachers who left. In this table, you can see the number of retirements for each employee group by month through this past December for a total of 53. Now let's add the number of resignations for the same time period, which gives us an additional 274 departures. While this is of concern, it is important to note that there are currently an additional 25 pending retirements and resignations in January so far. This brings the grand total to 352 employees who left us since the beginning of the school As we shared with you this summer, the causes for the teacher shortages continue to include the lack of qualified applicants, salary and benefits, options for other careers, and teacher retention. We believe the pandemic continues to impact the overall availability of staff, not only in education, but in a wide range of occupations. Adding to the challenge of getting qualified applicants is the housing market, the lack of available housing, and the increased sales prices, and competition among buyers, as well as the impact of the pandemic on the supply chain, labor shortages, and of course, the rental property rates. Although we've seen many challenges and fluctuations in the number of available staff, we continue to be successful in locating and recruiting teachers. As of December 15th, 2021, we've been able to hire 468 new teachers, which include 13 future teacher award winners comprised of students who completed the Virginia Teacher for Tomorrow program, or the Early Childhood Education Program at the Career and Technical Education Center. And 25 early commitment incentive recipients for math, special education, Spanish immersion, as well as three career technical education staff members for the current school year. This would have not been possible without the great teamwork between principals and other hiring managers, the Department of Human Resources, and the support of our School Our current vacancies continue to fluctuate due to resignations and retirements, resulting in the possibility of a single position being staffed multiple times. Included within the category of "other" are 121 bus drivers and 33 positions from various The Human Resources Department continues to participate in virtual and in-person fairs locally and throughout Virginia, as well as Pennsylvania, New York, Ohio, North Carolina, and Maryland, just to name a few. Some of our recent initiatives include updated business cards that include a QR code that directs interested applicants to our employment site, the Bus Driver Referral Program that offers up to $750 to employees who refer a new bus driver who completes training and works for 50 days. New employment posters distributed around the division and departments provide the public and staff with information about employment opportunities in the division. Staffing specialists and teacher retention liaisons provide outreach to our student teachers and school counseling interns. We also continue to provide information about job opportunities on our social media sites, as well as reinstating a radio campaign. A new partnership between the Virginia Employment Commission, Workforce Connection, allows military veterans to see our vacancy list for two days prior to releasing the posting to the general public. We also continue to post our jobs on Education Week, Top School Jobs, Indeed, Glass Door, and Google for Jobs. Finally, we had 435 people register for the VB Schools Virtual Career and Information Fair. Participants reported that they found the information fair to be helpful. They liked the opportunity to ask questions and to participate virtually in our spring event. During our spring event, our candidates will also participate in interviews. The staffing specialists continue to follow up with participants from the fair. Thank you for your time. This concludes the recruitment and staffing and retention portion of the presentation. Members of the Department of Human Resources are here to address any questions you may have.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Just one question on Slide 12, under Current Vacancies, as of January 6th, just curious how that compares to a normal year?
Alright, we're gonna have to look that.
Okay.
You said Slide 12, correct?
Slide 12, yes, under Current Vacancies. Yeah, thank you.
Before we proceed with the next portions, I guess we're allowed to come back to you, right?
Absolutely. Good evening, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, members of the School Board, and Dr. Spence. As a follow-up to Anne's presentation, we will continue with an update on our compensation programs. I would like to start by stating a quote by an anonymous author who states, "Resilience is not about being positive, it is about doing your best work around things that get in your way." Thank you. Virginia Beach City Public Schools has truly exemplified the words resilience and agility in the area of compensation. The Division has had to adapt, adjust, shift focus, and be innovative in order to meet the needs of our students and our staff. As part of the agenda for this evening, we will first take a look at the progress we have made this year regarding our compensation programs, and some innovative ways the Division has found to handle vacancy shortfalls. Next, we will review where we stand in the market as it relates to our instructional pay scale, our educational allowances. We'll have a few market comparisons for some of our hard-to-staff positions, and the impact of the Virginia minimum wage increases on Virginia Beach City Public Schools through the year 2026. Finally, we will review some budget considerations. So let's begin with reviewing the progress made regarding our compensation programs and a few innovative ideas the Division instituted this year to deal with staffing in our schools. At the beginning of the 2122 school year, the School Board funded a half percent staff increase for eligible employees and a four-and-a-half percent cost of living adjustment for all employees in allocated positions on both the instructional and unified pay scales. We increased all part-time rates by 5%. We increased all our summer school rates by 5% to 14% to ensure the successful operation of our summer school programs. The School Board approved providing 100% of the funding necessary to increase our additional duty supplements, which had not been increased since 2003 when minor changes were made. We also began the process of increasing the value of our educational allowances, which had not been increased since 1996. To meet the challenges of staffing custodial vacancies, the Division continued the Custodial Initiative Program, and this program allows our current, non-instructional, non-exempt staff to fill custodial vacancies after their contracted hours and earn their own rate of pay. We increased the pay for our teachers covering a colleague's class during their planning and/or lunch bell from $25 to $35 per class, and this was effective December 1, 2021. To promote another talent pipeline, we implemented the Bus Driver Referral Program for current employees, which Anne mentioned earlier. We utilized central office staff who volunteered to substitute in teacher, teacher assistant, custodian, and office support vacancies, and this continues today. We maintained the premium cost of our health insurance to the employee at the same rate for the third year in a row since 2019. We provided all eligible employees with up to a $1,000 bonus to recognize the hard work and commitment to Virginia Beach City Public Schools, and they received this on December 15th of 2021. We temporarily increased the daily rate for all teacher substitutes by $30 per day, and this was effective January 1 of this year and will continue through June 30th of 2022. Effective January 1, we implemented the $2,500 recruitment and retention incentive for positions identified as hard-to-staff in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. On January 15th, this month, employees and new hires to the Division and hard-to-staff positions will start receiving up to $208 per pay period as part of this incentive. In an effort to lock in new hires, we will be expanding the practice of providing prospective new teacher hires with letters of intent. Now while this list is not exhaustive, these accomplishments in the area of compensation represent a win for all stakeholders, our students, our staff, our Division. We are appreciative of the School Board's support in making these changes possible. So now let's take a look at where we stand in the market for some of our compensation programs, starting with our teachers. Each year, the Department of Human Resources gathers survey data which helps us to compare our teacher salaries to our local school divisions. For the purpose of this presentation, comparisons will be shown in five-year increments up to 30 years of experience. Please note, we will be providing our rankings for 2021, which is shown in blue at the bottom, to use as a comparison to 2122. First, the School Division continues to maintain its first-place ranking for teachers with zero years of experience, as indicated by the number 1 in the blue box below. We maintain our ranking for five years of experience. At the 10-year mark, we gained some ground and moved from last year's fifth-place ranking to third place. However, at the 15-year mark, we dropped from fourth to fifth place against our competitors. Finally, at the 20, 25, and 30-year marks, the Division maintains its previous year's ranking. And looking at the monetary differences between Virginia Beach City Public Schools and the Division ranked number one, you can see the differences represented below. As you can see, Chesapeake has moved into first place for all categories except the Moving on to our educational allowances, now these are typically given for an advanced degree license or certification in some of the areas that you see listed here. For the purpose of this presentation, we are going to compare our educational allowances with our local school division. Please keep in mind that educational allowances are subject to Virginia retirement system contributions, so not only do they add value to the employee's yearly income, it also impacts their retirement income. Before moving on to the Division's ranking for educational allowances for the current school year, we wish to remind you of our ranking for the 2021 school year. Out of the seven school divisions, Virginia Beach City Public Schools tied for sixth place for teachers with a master's degree, and we ranked seventh place for masters plus 30 and up. For the 2021 school year, 56% of our teacher types had advanced degrees, and the last time the Division increased the educational allowances was back in 1996. This year, 59% of our teacher types have advanced degrees, and for the first time in 25 years, funding was made available to increase the Division's educational allowances, which helped to improve our standing in the local market. Out of the seven school divisions surveyed, Virginia Beach City Public Schools moved up in the rankings from being tied at sixth place to fifth place for teachers with a master's degree. For the masters plus 30, EDS, the Division moved up from seventh place to fifth place, and for the doctorate, the Division moved up from seventh place to sixth place. With the national teacher shortage continuing to challenge the resiliency of our programs, our recruitment efforts, continuing to address the value of our educational allowances is more important than ever. This was a good start to moving us forward in terms of making our educational allowances competitive with other school divisions. With over 3,300 of our employees receiving educational allowances for advanced degrees, here you see the amounts paid by two of our local competitors, as well as Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Last year, the School Board provided $1.7 million in funding to start the process of addressing our educational allowances, resulting in the current amounts you see here. In order to continue the work of increasing our allowances to be competitive, we would need to increase the values to the targeted amounts shown here. The overall cost to make our educational allowances competitive is a little over $4.1 million, and that is inclusive of benefits. A proposed solution would be to fund the increases over three years at the cost you see here, or we could phase this in over a shorter period of time. Now that we have looked at comparisons that affect primarily teachers, let's view the salaries of some of our other employee groups that we are having difficulty staffing, starting with our bus drivers. Bus drivers are defined as a critical shortage position in Virginia. School divisions across the nation continue to experience difficulties with staffing this high-in-demand position as more and more employees with CDL seek jobs in the private sector or choose to not drive at all. Effective with the 2122 school year, all bus drivers were upgraded from pay grade 9 to pay grade 10, and this resulted in our employees receiving 5% to 12% increase in their pay. As it relates to where we stand in the market with our local school divisions, this year, Virginia Beach City Public Schools ranks second behind Newport News as they provided a mid-year increase for this position, resulting in their drivers earning 30 cents more than Virginia Beach City Public Schools drivers at the entry level. Another group of employees who work to ensure our buildings are clean and safe for us to educate our students is our custodians. Across the nation, employers are competing for this group of employees, and Virginia Beach City Public Schools is no different. With increased cleaning protocols, the risk associated with the job, as well as the pay, continues to make hiring for this position even more of a challenge for our Division. Custodians are now defined as a hard-to-staff position for our school division. Effective with the 2122 school year, we also moved all custodian levels 1 through 4 up one pay grade. The result, Virginia Beach City Public Schools ranks first place among local school divisions for an entry-level custodian 1. This represents the largest group or number of custodians in the school division out of the four levels of custodians. Cafeteria assistants. During the pandemic, this group of employees, along with other food services staff, ensured our students received meals on a daily basis. Like the custodians, cafeteria assistants moved up one pay grade, which moved this position closer to the $12 minimum wage for 2023. With an entry rate of $11.61, we currently rank number one in the local area. However, we continue to experience problems staffing this position. This is primarily due to employees seeking employment in the fast-food industry that may offer more hours and higher-paying salaries, so yes, we are hiring for this very important group of employees, as well as the ones that we mentioned before. Other groups who ensure the successful operation and safety of our schools are teacher and security assistants. Currently, we continue to place our assistants on five different pay grades based on the assigned area, either general, ed, special ed, or security, and their degree. For example, a general education teacher assistant or a security assistant with a high school diploma is on U6, while a special education teacher assistant with a high school diploma is on U7. At our highest pay grade, a special education teacher assistant with a bachelor's degree is on U10. In order to bring our school division into alignment with other school divisions who place their assistants or their security staff on one pay grade, we offer the following option for your consideration. As previously mentioned, regular education teacher assistants and security assistants are on the same pay grade. However, for this particular slide, we will focus on teacher assistants first. As you can see, we rank sixth place As you can see, we rank sixth place for the lowest-level teacher assistant, which is U six. If we were to move all teacher assistants to grade ten, as you can see, we will rank first place and be well above the fifteen-dollar minimum wage requirement for two thousand and twenty-six. As mentioned previously, security assistants are placed in the same manner as teacher assistants by their education. For security assistants, we rank sixth place. Moving security assistants to grade ten will improve our overall ranking among local school divisions. Please note, security assistants at the Renaissance Academy and security officers who are currently on grade ten will automatically move to grade eleven. Keep in mind, Virginia Beach City Public Schools is the only school division with five different pay grades for assistants based on the employee's education. As it relates to the budgetary impact for upgrading our teacher and security assistants, we offer the following. Move all teacher assistants to the highest pay grade U ten and provide an educational allowance of seven hundred and fifty dollars for those holding a bachelor's degree. By doing this, teacher assistants will be placed on a more competitive pay grade, starting at sixteen dollars and forty cents per hour, and our principals will gain the ability to transfer staff within their schools to meet the needs of the students without impacting the employee's salary. So for instance, if a person is a special education teacher assistant and they decide to go to general ed, they could lose seven percent, up to seven percent of their pay. As it relates to security assistants, move all security assistants to U ten and also provide an educational allowance of seven hundred and fifty dollars for those holding a bachelor's degree. Like the teacher assistants, security assistants will be placed on a more competitive pay grade, starting at sixteen forty per hour. Security assistants at the Renaissance Academy and security officers will move to pay grade eleven to maintain the alignment of these positions. Effective January one, two thousand and twenty-two, the minimum wage increased from nine fifty per hour to eleven dollars per hour in the Commonwealth of Virginia. This represents phase two of a six-year process to increase the minimum wage in the Commonwealth of Virginia to fifteen dollars per hour by the year two thousand and twenty-six. In light of the two thousand and twenty-two minimum wage increase and future increases, how is Virginia Beach City Public Schools positioned for these changes? At the top of the slide, you see the minimum hourly rate by year, as well as at the top of each chart for twenty-one through twenty-six. Along the left side of the chart, you see the pay grades affected by the minimum wage changes over the next four years and the entry-level hourly rates for each pay grade. Please note, this chart does not take into consideration any future raises and uses the value for the current year for each year shown here. So you can see at pay grade five, eleven dollars and sixty-one cents is in every category from twenty-one through twenty-six. As indicated in the first chart, Virginia Beach City Public Schools was above the minimum wage for two thousand and twenty-one. And this is also true for two thousand and twenty-two. However, beginning January one, two thousand and twenty-three, the minimum wage increases to twelve dollars per hour for years twenty-three and twenty-four. Some of our employees on grade five would then fall below the minimum wage requirement. For twenty-five, grades five, six, and seven below the anticipated thirteen dollars and fifty cents minimum wage. And finally, for two thousand and twenty-six, grades five, six, seven, and eight are below the final phase of the goal of fifteen dollars per hour minimum wage in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Again, this does not take into consideration any future adjustments to the scales, however. The estimated percentage increase needed to get the lowest grade to fifteen dollars per hour by two thousand and twenty-six is approximately twenty-seven point two percent or six point eight percent per year. With a little over eighteen hundred employees on pay grades five through eight, approximately fourteen hundred employees earn less than fifteen dollars per hour. Earlier in the presentation, we mentioned moving the teacher and security assistants to pay grade ten. Moving these groups of employees to pay grade ten will eliminate the need to address approximately eight hundred and fifty employees, thus allowing us to focus on the remaining group, our custodians and our cafeteria assistants. Please keep in mind, these are the minimum wages we are required to pay. But in some instances, may not be what the market is paying for certain positions. We are now competing for some of the same employees who are turning to the private sector for higher-paying salaries. Our substitute teachers, another valuable resource to our recruitment efforts and ensuring the educational process continues when the teacher is unable to be there. And looking at how we compare with other school divisions, we currently rank second for licensed substitute teachers. We tie third for non-licensed substitute teachers. And finally, we rank first for long-term substitute teacher rates. Effective January one, two thousand and twenty-two, we were able to temporarily increase all of our teacher substitute rates by thirty dollars per day using CARES funding. The additional thirty dollars is not reflected in the values presented in this chart. For example, January one through June thirty, two thousand and twenty-two, a licensed teacher substitute will make a hundred and thirty-five dollars versus a hundred and five, as shown in the chart. Unless additional funding is provided, we will revert back to the daily rates indicated when school continues on the fall. So normally, we would present information on where we stand in the market for employee healthcare costs. However, this information was presented to you on December seventh by the Office of Consolidated Benefits in Mercer. Therefore, we will defer to the Performance Monitoring Committee, who will review the options presented by Mercer to move the division into a more competitive position. However, as mentioned earlier, the division maintained the premium cost to the employee at the same amount for three years in a row, and it will remain the same for two thousand and twenty-two, so that is now four years in a row. We have discussed some market comparisons, mainly for physicians identified as hard to staff in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. So let's move on to our twenty-two, twenty-three budget considerations. As mentioned earlier, two thousand and twenty-one marked the first time in twenty-five years that this division increased our educational allowances. In order to continue moving our educational allowances to become competitive, the cost is four point one million dollars. Virginia Beach is the only school division that places our assistants on multiple pay grades. The cost to move the assistants to the minimum of grade ten is approximately two point four million dollars. The additional cost to address equity for experience is one point five million dollars, and this will help to avoid compressions of our salaries. The cost to provide teacher assistants with an allowance for a bachelor's degree is five hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Security assistants are also placed on the scale based on their level of education. To move them to pay grade ten with full equity would be a little over one million dollars. Security assistants at the Renaissance Academy and our security officers will move to grade eleven with full equity at a cost of a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. The cost to provide security assistants with an allowance for a bachelor's degree is three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Based on the information shared thus far, the, the cost is approximately ten point two million dollars. Finally, increasing teacher substitute rates. During the presentation, we showed that we ranked second for licensed and third for unlicensed teacher substitutes. This year, we temporarily increased the daily rate for all categories by thirty dollars per day, and this is competitive. To maintain the increase on a permanent basis and improve our ranking in the market, the additional cost is approximately five point two million dollars. The overall estimated cost is approximately fifteen point five million dollars. Please keep in mind, with the exception of moving teacher assistants to the minimum of grade ten, these considerations can be done as a phase in, much like we did with our equity adjustments many years ago, few years ago. Thank you, and this concludes our presentation for tonight. Members of the Department of Human Resources are here to address any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. So we, we have a number in the queue, and we're beginning with Mrs. Hughes and Mrs. Anderson. And we, we acknowledge the others as well.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Mrs. Owens is in the queue as well.
Thank you.
On slide twenty-one, where it lists all of the salary comparisons, does this include benefits and deferred compensation as well?
No.
Because that is part of, you know.
This is strictly based salaries.
Do we have, do we have a table that includes all of that?
For slide twenty-one? No, not right now, because, I mean, it depends on what the person elects. We basically have a flat rate that we budget for, which I believe is about twenty, twenty-four percent.
Okay, well, I mean, so if I have insurance through my employer, the amount toward my health coverage that my employer pays is untaxed income for me. And then deferred compensation is still compensation, even though you're not receiving it right now. So it seems like to get a complete picture, we would want to see that as well. Is there any way to get a comparison with, like, all of the income included like that?
Um, let me think about it, let us discuss it in H R and see what we can do about that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Anderson, and we have Mrs. Williams.
So thank you for the presentation, it was very informative. And I, I agree that several of these initiatives that you have suggested we need to do. But there's another part of keeping teachers, keeping the ones that we have, is, is important as well. And, and sometimes it doesn't cost a lot. For example, I visited Lynn Haven Middle a few weeks ago, and a, a teacher approached me, and he was so excited because he had gone over twenty-five years. And what he was excited about was because he'd gone over twenty-five years, he had earned an extra personal reasons day. He was so, so excited about that. You would have thought we had given him a hundred thousand dollars, he was that excited. So I just want to explore that there are other initiatives that we can be doing to keep our teachers happy and our employees, not just the teachers, but all employees. But that, that's just one little thing that we can do to help them and keep them, keep them. Because, you know, once we get them hired, we don't want them to become disenchanted with teaching and leave us after three, four, or five years. It's important to keep our experienced teachers. And, and I'm looking for some type of a, more of an incentive at the ten-year and the twenty-year mark. Whether it's a bonus, I, I don't know. But I do believe, because money talks, you know. But I do believe that our experienced teachers need to have an incentive when they get to that higher level because they're worth, they are worth more, they are worth a lot. We, we've trained them, and one of the things that, that we've, keep hearing is that, well, I've heard this quite often from people who have left here and gone to Chesapeake, for example. And they don't train their teachers the way we do. They don't have a lot of the, the programs that we have where we, we train our teachers for certain initiatives and, and there's certain programs. So our teachers are very well-trained here, and so when you get to that, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty-year mark, and you have all this experience, we need to be coming up with, let's think outside the box more and give them more of an incentive to stay because we want them to get to thirty. And yes, money is a huge incentive, but we can come up with some other things outside the box. And so I'd love for the Human Resources team to get together and start thinking about some other ways that we can do some incentives. And I realize the bonuses will not help their, their retirement. But it certainly helps them along the way and gives people hope, gives people something to strive for. And I, you know, I just feel like that's something that we need to do as well. I am all in favor of all these things that you have suggested. So, but I want you to think outside the box and come up with some other incentives that we can give our, our experienced teachers. Thank you.
Mrs. Williams and Ms. Owens.
Yeah, very, very good presentation. Just out of curiosity, is, is data kept or can we find out, like, which school divisions are potential high-res, are we, are we losing our potential teachers too? Is it, is it mainly Chesapeake or is it mainly Norfolk? Or do we have that? Who, who are we losing our folks to?
Chesapeake, but I would say that, you know, it all depends on whether or not the employee actually tells us where they're going. So if they tell us, then yes, we would know. But if they don't tell us, we don't have a way of knowing, it's not a requirement.
Okay, and, and do you, do you ask that? And they just say, I don't want to tell you, or do they just volunteer, or how, how do you get that?
I'm going to turn to the side here and ask that question.
So our employees who leave us are given an exit survey?
So is that the question, or are you?
No, not leaving.
Yes, not the ones we have who are leaving.
But no, no, not, not the leaving ones, I'm talking about potential, yes, potential ones that, that, you know, come interview with us and maybe interview throughout all the localities. If they don't choose us, who are they choosing to go work for, first time, you know?
Well, in that case, it really varies. So we have interviewed candidates who have turned us down and have gone to Chesapeake because of their benefits. And so especially the family plan is what we mainly hear for, for candidates who choose someone other than Virginia Beach. That's our number one reason that we hear. But again, if we call a candidate and put an offer on the table and they decline, they don't have to necessarily share with us their reason why. Sometimes it's a relocation issue. So for instance, we've had candidates, because we've been able to expand, interview virtually, we've had more participants from outside of the state of Virginia. And then, as Anne mentioned in her portion of the presentation, locating housing and affordable housing has been a real struggle, and they've had to call back and decline, stay where they are, and then hopefully transition at a later date in time. We've seen that more so here in the last couple of years.
Okay. I think that's all for right now, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Owens, you're on.
I actually have two questions.
Hold on a moment, we're working on your volume.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, great. Okay, so two questions. The first one is in regards to the teacher assistant pay. And I guess, thank you for such a thorough presentation. It really draws attention to the fact that we need to do better. The numbers are embarrassing for where we are with our teacher assistants. And so obviously, we need to do better. But when I, when you talked about moving everybody to the, I believe, U ten and used the example about the special education assistants, if that's where they started and the principal needed to move them within the school, then they, when our current system would end up losing income, are we looking at still having something that incentivizes teacher assistants into special education? And if we lose that, are we, is there a concern that it's going to be even harder to staff those special education assistants? And if we lose that, are we, is there a concern that it's going to be even harder to staff those special education assistants?
Trying to digest your question. So in essence, Ms. Owens, were you asking if we move everyone to U-10, was there a concern about losing our special education assistants?
Right, if they're currently being paid differently than other teacher assistants, I assume that that's because it's a harder-to-staff position, and we know that, from what I'm hearing, we're having difficulty with special education teachers, teacher assistants, everything special education, maintaining them particularly during the pandemic. If that's no longer, I guess, incentivized like it is now, are we going to have more issues than we currently do in maintaining that?
So with your question, is difficult to predict that our special education assistants are not losing salary? So they would still maintain their current rate as well as be afforded the additional monies for advanced degrees. What we are finding in our buildings, especially at the elementary level, is that we're losing actually more PE assistants and general assistants than we are special education assistants because of the large degree difference in pay. And our principals have communicated that they don't have the flexibility to move that particular employee group around as they typically would. So what we would hope is this, by moving everyone to the same scale and allowing some flexibility, even our special education teacher assistants can have the opportunity to work with general ed students as well as special ed students, and we could provide the training that's necessary to our other assistants and allow more flexibility. But in terms of special education assistants leaving, if we move everyone to a U-2, my thoughts are, if they're with us now, it's because they're satisfied in the, in the job and with the work, and they would understand that their colleagues are barely making minimum wage, and I think they would be appreciative of, of us looking at addressing that need.
Sure, and I, I agree, I agree, everybody, you know, should not be, nobody should be making the minimum wage, and that we're kind of in a race right now to get our, our folks up above minimum wage before the, the state mandates it. That, that's already its own issue. Okay, and I, I guess with that, my other question was on slides seven and eight, where you talked about the resignations from the different years. The, I think slide seven was the years past, the numbers of resignations, and then slide eight showed us kind of where we are for this school year. For the years past, did that timeframe go from like July 1st to, to June 30th? Or what is the timeframe that we're looking at in those different years?
We did a summer update, so we focused in on that portion of time. So based on Ms. Manning's question, we can just go ahead and, we'll do the whole window, because we, we can, we can grab that data. But normally, it is from July, that's when we start, because the fiscal, well, the school, the school contract technically ends June 30th. So we usually start July 1st. So we'll pull that information for that same time period. I believe that's what you're asking, Ms. Owens, right?
Okay, yeah, I apologize, Ms. Manning already asked for that, for that piece, so that we're able to kind of look at apples to apples there.
Right, she, she was requesting the information for the same time period that I mentioned now, but you're asking me to include it from July, from the summer.
Gotcha, okay, great, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Manning.
Thank you. So you, you answered some of my questions on the minimum wage increase. I know we've been waiting to see that, and Farrell warned us about that when the legislation was passed, that it's going to be a significant impact on our division. So I see here, so I want to see if I'm correct in this. So this proposal under budget considerations.
Okay.
For the TAs and the security assistants, if we did all of this, and I know you mentioned a possible phased-in approach, this is just if we did all of it right now, how much it would cost. We would, for, for those, for TAs and security assistants, we would be meeting the 2026 minimum wage requirement. What do we have left? We have custodians, we have cafeteria assistants.
Those are the primary positions on those remaining grades.
Okay, if, if we could get some numbers on, if, for all of our employees over the next, from here until 2026, to bring everybody up to the state mandated minimum wages, that would be helpful for us to know as we consider our budget considerations. And I would be interested in a phased-in approach information as well, again, as we're considering our budget, because this is going to be very, very costly to us, and I, and it's something that we have to do. So I want to put that up there at the top, so. And then my next question is regarding all of the incentives that we've just recently given with bonuses, recruitment incentives for drivers, teachers, all the hard-to-fill positions. What feedback, what have you seen? Are we, are we holding on to people, are we recruiting people? What impact have you seen from all of that? So far, I know it's, it hasn't been that long.
You would think, based on the fact that we still have 116 teacher vacancies, that it wasn't effective, but I will tell you, it absolutely has been. Every weekend on Sunday, Mr. Platt pulls every new applicant that we've had to apply, and our staffing specialists are calling them. So when you take into account the number of resignations and retirements we've had since September, we, we've been holding our own and filling as many of them as possible. Whereas when we talk to some of our other counterparts in other cities, they are really struggling in terms of new hires. So I know you receive the Personnel Report each week, and it, it's almost a twofold. You know, I get all excited, because I go, yay, we've hired, you know, 60, and then I come down and I count up, and I go, oh man, but we just lost 50. But we're still ahead, you know, in bringing in some positions. So we definitely feel like, and based on some correspondence we received. So we've received a few emails and messages here and there where people have actually retracted their resignations or retirements, and you'll see those on the Personnel Report, and we've received a few emails where individuals had indicated they were thinking about it, and the incentives have made them stay. Because as Mrs. Wood has mentioned, and, and as all of us who drive around the city, I mean, you see all the billboards indicating, you know, starting salary $15 an hour, or, you know, $20 an hour and $1,000 bonuses. So it's very competitive, even our, you know, McDonald's across the street was advertising, you know, starting salary 15. So the fact that we're still holding on to our employees says to me that they are proud to work for Virginia Beach, and that's why they stay with us.
Okay, thank you so much, and also I just want to thank staff for all your hard work. I know that I saw our Director of HR in a picture, cleaning tables in a cafeteria. And so I know you all have been filling in and picking up, you know, where, where we have holes, so thank you for all your hard work.
Okay, Mrs. Franklin, and then Mrs. Felton.
Well, I just want to, I, I think that all of our leadership in terms of stepping up and getting into classrooms and cleaning tables and doing whatever, I think has been amazing, really shows great leadership in a very difficult time. And I just wanted to also address, in terms of the benefits, am I correct that I heard, and I, I think I remember that, we are giving the part-time employees benefits now, is that correct?
Yes, some of our part-time employees.
Yes, our part-time employees are eligible to receive benefits, especially those in allocated positions, they are eligible.
Okay, so, so part-time employees in allocated positions are eligible for benefits, for all benefits?
But in, of health.
Health benefits, okay. I, I think that is really important, that's a great selling tool.
Let me be clear, if there are a 50% FTE in allocation or more, then yes, they are eligible for VRS and everything else. When I'm thinking about part-time employees, I'm thinking about our old employees. A bus driver is definitely, yes. A cafeteria assistant, yes.
Yeah, so I, I would, I don't know if there's a way to give us a list of those eligible part-time employees. I, I personally would love to get out there and just make sure that we're continuing to promote personally, and letting them know that. I think that's a huge benefit, because a lot of part-time workers do not have benefits right now. So I think that is a huge benefit. And then also, in terms of our total benefits package, I, I heard someone else mention, another colleague mention, but I really think that that, I, I know, being a prior military person, you know, we, the job sometimes was really awful, but you stayed and you continued re-enlisting because of the benefits. And so I think when it comes down to it, some difficult positions are enhanced and, and have, you know, good record for retention because of the type of benefits you provide. So in terms of that, per city, per division, where do we stack in terms of benefits? I would be very curious about that.
So the health benefits in particular, that, that was the presentation that you received from the Mercer Consultants meeting just before the winter break, and we can, so you have that information, if you're curious about how we compare on terms of the health benefits?
Oh, okay, sorry, I'm probably forgot.
No, that's okay, so, because it was before the winter break, and so it's, it's available to you in your archives.
Okay, okay, good, I'll check.
And we did revisit that, as you might recall, where we left that was we were going to look at that information again, you know, dive back in with the PPMC. We had a meeting with them on January 4th, where we did go back through that information in a little bit more detail, and talk about, so what does that mean for us in terms of budget recommendations and that sort of thing? And, Ms. Felton, I, I don't know if now's the time you want to jump in, but I will mention the PPMC did take a vote at that meeting to send forward a recommendation to complete a compensation study, which, sort of to Mrs. Hughes earlier, a recommendation to the board to consider to do a compensation study. To Mrs. Hughes, would provide you a bigger picture in terms of the marketplace, of where we stand on a kind of job-alike comparison, both in terms of benefits and in terms of salaries.
Okay.
And as the whole board will recall, that really is kind of a follow-on to the July conversation, where we brought somebody in to talk about compensation, and, and there was discussion then about a compensation study, but no real decision made. And, and so the PPMC did vote at least to forward to you all a recommendation. Mrs. Felton, I don't know if you want to follow on to that?
Well, as you mentioned, Dr. Smith, I am in the queue, I'm next, Ms. Melneck? Am I next in the queue? Okay, thank you.
Perfect timing.
It was perfect timing, I was trying to jump in. And one of the questions that Mrs. Williams, I'd like to look to hit on that as well, she was saying, what school division are we competing with? And Mrs. Williams, I'd like to tell you, it is no longer that we are competing against school divisions anymore, it's private sector. And number one, and another thing I would like to say through here to all of my colleagues, this is now in an employee-driven market. Employees now have the upper hand on things that they're doing and where they're going. And I just have to thank Ms. Ann, Ms. Judith, and Ms. Woodhouse for this detailed presentation you've done, because on slide nine, you did mention a couple of things about salary benefits lacking versing other careers. We now have our two, three, and five years employees resigning because of benefits and compensation, that's nationally. As we look at the news, I look at the news every night, this is what they're saying to us, and they can no longer, our system is no longer sustainable for them to, our benefits to support their families. One teacher said, I'm already working school, and she said I have to work two jobs in order to keep up with what we are doing. I am real concerned, I had two questions, I am real concerned about where it's going. And again, we are, we are one of the largest employees in the city of Virginia Beach. And again, we, we are not competing with other divisions, because I'm talking with them, and they're saying who they're losing as well, and it is to the private sector, it is to Amazon, it is to FedEx. Our bus drivers are going to Amazon and FedEx. Even our cafeteria workers are going to the big cuisine restaurants and getting the benefits that they need there. Our teachers are going to the big 500 fortune companies because of our teachers' expertise. When they come out of college, their expertise is so valuable. And then after we get into, into the school system, they're still certified every two to three years to be tested, to have those skills that they need. And these companies need those skills, and that's where we're going. I would respectfully ask my colleagues to, after the information we received from our PPMC meeting, I would respectfully encourage my colleagues to consider us doing a compensation study. The city, and I don't know if we're in the market with it or not, but the city, the city council has put forth one, they put forth one in 2020, and they're still waiting on the information. And, and after talking with a couple of those, and asked them how, what were the proceedings, and what did they think about it, and they were all in for it, most of them, they said. But I would, I want to know, are we in the market for getting a, um, a compensation study? And I would ask my colleagues to respectfully, and I would encourage us to consider that once. And because some of the questions that, that are being asked tonight, the number and the data that we're asking for, a couple of times we asked for the numbers and how many, who are we competing against, and what do our packages look like? So I'm thinking what we need, I'm, I'm feeling that the compensation is, is something that we need as in hand. My next question is, on slide 20, at the bottom, you talked about planning to issue letters of intent to prospective new teachers. Can you give me more detail on that, and exactly what does that, that mean?
What that means is that currently we do offer, currently we do offer letters of intent, but not at the number that we're anticipating to offer this year. So basically, we're just going to offer, we're going to give it to them, isn't that some of the fairs and things like that? Letters of intent to our employees, to prospective applicants.
And can you share what's in that letter, what, what's detailed into the letter of intent?
I'm going to have to defer to our director.
Good evening, thanks for the question. We have offered letters of intent for several years, particularly for teachers who may have started in the middle of the year on an annual contract, and they were doing a good job, and the principals wanted us to keep them. So we went ahead and did a letter of intent for the following school year. We're expanding that greatly this year. We, we've opened up that window already for letters of intent for next year. But your, your specific question was, what does that entail? What that entails is, we're going to give you a job for next year. And so we're, we're making a commitment to you now, in the middle of this year, for a position for next year.
So is that also a commitment to the teachers themselves, to make a commitment to stay?
Yes, yeah, I mean, if they accept it, then they're going to sign and say, yes, I accept the letter of intent. So that way, they're intending to come and work with us for the following school year, and we're intending to have them for the following school year.
That, you know, and that was, that's, that's still one of my questions that I'm, I'm grappling with, hearing you use a letter of intent. And I get the intention of the intent to keep that, those in. But again, you know, I look at our list of early retirement, the resignation of three- to four-year teachers in, and how we, how they're gravitating toward the private sector because of benefits and because of compensation. I think that as a, a board, as an employee, of as many employer, of as many employees that we have, I think it would be to our benefit to try to give our employees some sense of hope, some sense of incentive, and, and, and letting them know that we want to create a healthy, working environment for them as well, and sustainable. Right now, the way we look now, things are sort of shaky for a lot of us, and I, unfortunately, I have to allude to the pandemic that we had, and what it has caused, and it has opened up a lot of fields of people going back, re-educating themselves, and going to a different sector. And from, from teachers' perspective, they don't have to make that many steps, because they are. because they're already there, it's just a few steps in order to be accepted. I want to keep our teachers, I want to keep what we have, it's very important. I want the professionalism, and I want the quality of teachers that we're getting in. So with that said, in order to keep that, that quality, the perspective of good teachers, uh, incentive, we're just in the market, me, I'm saying, after looking at all of the numbers, after looking at all of the fact of a compensation study, I rest my case.
Yeah, and just, just to explain the letter of intent, why we can't give somebody a contract now for next year, that's because the budget hasn't been passed yet for next year. If the budget had already been passed for next year, we could go ahead and offer them an actual contract. But this is the, the closest thing that we can do until the budget gets passed, and then they get the actual contract.
But still, I still go back to creating that health environment to keep them for more than two to five years.
We agree.
Thank you.
Yes, we have Mrs. Manning and Mrs. Franklin.
Um, just real quick, I wanted to follow up with Ms. Felton. I, I've been asking for market analysis for um, employee positions other than teachers for the last four years. So I fully support this compensation study, thank you.
Mrs. Franklin.
I'm just curious, in terms of uh, the bus drivers and the caf- the cafeteria workers, and um, I guess it would be also um, uh, the custodians, do they ever work weekends? And I'm thinking, you know, in terms of sale, selling these type of positions, um, and the type of people that might be interested in having their weekends off, um, do they ever work on the weekends?
If any of our staff work on the weekends, it's always um, voluntary, but obviously we pay them. So for instance, um, many of our, uh, say, high schools, um, may have a sporting event or.
So like security or something?
Yes, and so um, the principal will work with their staff in terms of coverage. Um, if we have a special event taking place that's on the weekend, you'll see uh, um, our, some of our cafeteria staff and all. But their general contract is whatever hours set Monday through Friday. They serve students first, and so that would be Monday through Friday. And anything extra would be um, voluntarily, and then obviously they would be paid for that.
Okay, thank you, I'm just looking for selling opportunities here.
Yes, ma'am.
So yes, so I wanted to acknowledge, so you are looking for confirm, confirmation or affirmation from us, and you mentioned the committee vote. So I just want to ask administration, I mean, speaking to Mrs. Manning's point, and I'm not going back that long ago, but even with our summer retreat and we had the consultant, and this was a discussion item, and, and it, it was kind of just put aside to be considered. So we can assume that now everybody's on the same page with, with seeing the need for this? By that, I mean, it's administration and the committee?
Yes, ma'am, we just need blessing of the board.
Mrs. Williams?
Um, yeah, I know we discussed this in July, so has it been, did we, has it been started? And then we just kind of put it to the side, or?
Correct, it was uh, never formally decided. Um, there was discussion around uh, joining the city and um, their compensation study. But many of their positions don't actually mirror our positions. Um, but what we are hopeful is that if um, the board, which it sounds like you are, give us the blessing, then we can still reach out um, with the vendor that they're using, which happens to be the company we brought in for the retreat, um, and see if we can still follow up with them at a, a little discounted rate as well.
Okay, and when was our last compensation study?
Actually, I just asked Ms. Woods, and she said uh, two thousand five, two thousand six was the last time we've done a full-fledged, all positions, full-on compensation study. So it's definitely time.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right, so as far as the uh, affirmation from the board, um, Mrs. Felton, did, is there anybody with any uh, objection? So I believe you've gotten what you were seeking.
Thank you so much.
The committee, and we thank the committee for bringing this forward, and staff too, for getting us back on track with this.
Okay, so just, so clearly for the record, we're going to move forward with the compensation study, and there's no objection from the board?
Yes.
One, one quick question, I mean, I, it would be nice to have a general idea of the cost.
Yeah, and I asked, we were trying to find out, um, because there was an RFP, and I think there was a rider on there to see if there had been a proposed cost, and we haven't gotten that information back.
So I, yeah, I mean, I, I, I support it, but I'd really like to know a cost.
Yeah, I'll tell you what we'll do is, um, once we figure that out, is we will certainly let the board know before we enter into any agreement. And if there's any concerns, you can let us know.
Thank you. Great.
And just for clarification, you want all positions? I know at one time, Ms. Manning, you wanted to focus on certain work groups. And so we want to be clear as we seek out a quote um, from a few vendors. Is that every position, or was there a focus on classified positions?
I mean, I, I, I mean, I think we have a lot of information on teachers. I don't know that we necessarily need that because you guys have pretty much provided that for us. Um, you know, for me, most importantly, it's hard to fill positions would be up there at the top that we would need. Um, if, you know, if we're only going to do some, um, but I, I guess if there's only a small cost difference to do all of them.
Can we ask for the committee? Oh, please.
I was just going to give the committee an opportunity to respond to that, and then we have Mrs. Melnick.
Um, I would say that what, what you provided though was um, comparisons with other, with surrounding districts. I'd be more interested in a compensation study for teachers the real way, not just, um, because technically everybody could benefit, all the divisions could benefit from that compensation study. So I'm interested in all.
It, it might also help place them in the market outside of competition, not uh, in the private sector as well. We also see that as a, a part of our problem. That may be helpful information for us to have.
Mrs. Anderson?
So um, I, I'm on that committee as well. Um, and, and I wholeheartedly agree that we need to do this uh, this study. And I did, I do believe we need to do it for all employees. Um, and, and as Ms. Melnick suggested, um, you know, we, we a lot of times lose teachers, not to other districts, but to other professions. Um, so we need to, we need to find out, you know, where are we, where do we stand? And I think this will help us in the long, long term. Um, so, yes, I think teachers, teacher assistants, everybody, bus drivers, you name it. We need to, we need to have this study, and we need to have this information so we can move forward with it.
Wonderful, we'll do, we'll bring like Dr. Spence indicated, that information back for further conversation before we move forward.
And I'd like to take this moment and thank my colleagues for jumping in and being um, adamant about getting it done. I do believe that the entire staff should be a part of this um, compensation package because you presented all of those, every department, every position to us this evening. And each one of those had a concerning thought to me when you mentioned it. Uh, you're absolutely right, we do not mirror the city employees and things that they do in the compensation. So we need to have our own, and, and in, in the context that we need to know where we are and where we are moving in, in the future for our employees. And again, for their incentive and for a healthy working environment. Thank you so much, my colleagues, I appreciate you.
Chairman Ri.
Yes.
Mrs. Owens has her hand up.
Go ahead, Ms. Owens.
Thank you, I just had a, a quick question. I'm, I'm in total support of uh, getting that compensation study going for all of our employees. But um, does that mean that we won't be doing some of these other things in the meantime? Uh, some of those, uh, when we looked at the teacher assistant uh, pay, is that something that can still happen while we're having this compensation study? Or will all of that other stuff go on hold until after the RFP and the study comes back and all of those things?
Now that, uh, those are things that we're presenting to you for consideration for this year's budget that are outside of the uh, compensation study. Um, there, there areas we already know are challenges, there are areas we already know we have to address the minimum wage, you know, regardless of what happens, as was pointed out uh, by Mrs. Manning earlier, we, that's an area we're going to, we're going to have to tackle. And a couple of those are things that you've seen before, as you, you know, we began, began the phase in on the um, sort of uh, long-needed um, adjustments to the advanced degrees compensation. And so there's some, and then, and then we've talked for a couple of years now about the re- uh, consideration of moving teacher assistants to U ten with the uh, with the supplement for bachelor's. So all of that, I think, could be discussed in the guise of budget development for this year. And certainly if the board, you know, has specific thoughts or specific pieces of that that they'd like us to, to take into consideration as we're, because remember, we're in the budget development cycle right now. Um, and if the board has any bits of that that they'd like us to really focus on, it'd be helpful to hear that tonight.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Spence, and I, that's what I wanted to hear. I, I think that both parts are equally important, the compensation study and uh, the things that were brought forward today. Uh, I would certainly like to see a, a focus on uh, bringing our teacher assistants up to the U ten uh, for the, this budget cycle. Uh, we are losing so many, uh, staff members are retain, having issues with retention. And I think that that's one of the many places, obviously, I'd like to see all of these things come into play as soon as possible. Um, but our teacher assistants are, are positioned that I would hope that we could focus on, making sure that's a priority.
Okay, thank you, and final opportunity for anyone else? And I'm sure too, an email tonight or tomorrow, that as Dr. Spence notes, I mean, the, the, the superintendent estimate of needs is not, uh, what, just two or, I mean, three weeks off. So the sooner you, you come up with this feedback, the better.
Thank you.
All right, so we are, this is good timing tonight. We are, looks like we're ready to conclude our workshop, and we will reconvene here at six o'clock for our formal meeting.